Please look in your hymnals, Handy Dandy Hymnals 206. And as we begin to sing Amazing Grace together, I want you to look at the words carefully. Because it's, we get, sometimes we sing songs that we just keep singing, they sing themselves, and we don't think about them. If you look at the, um, words, you'll see the name, word grace so many times. Unmerited favor. In the first verse, we talk about amazing grace. And on the second verse, grace taught my heart to fear. And grace, my fears relieved my fears. Grace appeared, it's so precious. But when the third verse comes around, dangers, toils, and snares would come through, but grace brings us home safely. Hallelujah. So let's sing together. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved 206. Like me, I once was lost, but now I am found. Was blind, but now I see. Hallelujah. 'Twas grace that taught my heart to fear. And grace, my fears relieved. How precious did that grace appear? The hour I first believed. Through many dangers, toils, and snares, I have already come. 'Tis grace has brought me safe thus far. And grace will lead me home. When we've been met ten thousand years, bright shining as the sun. We've no less days to sing God's praise. And when we first begun... Let's praise the Lord. Praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God. Praise God, praise God, praise God. Praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God. Praise God, praise God, praise God. And we praise Him all day, morning, noon, and night. Amen? Praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him in the morning, praise Him in the new time. Praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him till the sun goes down. Worship Him, worship Him, worship Him. Worship in the morning, worship in the new time. Worship Him, worship Him. Worship till the sun go. Love Him, love Him, love Him. Love Him in the morning, love Him in the new time. Love Him, love Him. Love Him till the sun goes down. Obey Him, obey Him. Obey Him in the morning, obey Him in the new time. Obey Him, obey Him. Love Him till the sun goes down. Praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him in the morning, praise Him in the new time. Praise Him, praise Him. Praise Him till the sun goes down. Praise Him when the sun goes down. Praise Him when the sun goes down. Thank you, Lord, we do praise your name. We thank you for your grace, even through the dark times, the dangers, toils, and snares. We thank you for your grace. That brings us safe day by day and leads us home. Hallelujah, praise you, Jesus. Hallelujah.
Thank you so much. Beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. I have never done worse of two accordion before. That was amazing. Absolutely incredible. Thank you, Wendy, for taking us right into the presence of Jesus. Christian, will you help me tonight, buddy? Thank you, my friend. Well, we are in our... Yeah, we'll give a... Oh, he's, he's ready to run. I love it. He's ready. We are in our third session in the book of Philemon, as we've talked about the three different characters. We've talked about repentance, we've talked about grace, and tonight we're talking about truth and the one part truth. And the main idea for tonight is God wants us to wrestle with the truth of our wrongdoings so that we can reconcile with him and others fully. This is sometimes difficult because we don't want to. We don't want to look in the mirror. It's, it's not pretty. It requires humility. But he wants us to wrestle with the truth of our wrongdoing so we can reconcile with him and others fully. For the head change is to know the reality and the cost of our sins. I don't know about you, but it's good for us to remind ourselves the cost of the cross on a regular basis, on a regular basis and not take it for granted. The heart change is to feel grief over our sin and joy of being forgiven. When we experience this on an individual level, it's easy for us to be able to transmit that to others as well. And life change to acknowledge the truth of our sin and its consequences so that we can experience reconciliation in Christ with one another. And Hannah just texted me, "Filaymanion," that was hilarious. Did anybody get that joke? By the way, did anybody get that? Nobody laughed. I feel like I was the only one who laughed when Wendy said, "Our last filayman." No? Okay. It's a tough crowd here tonight, Wendy, I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't know what that's about, but, uh, it's a tough, it's a tough crowd, so. But hey, listen, first question, just an icebreaker tonight, and then we're gonna, we're gonna go into the study deep, dig a little bit deep and spend a little bit of time. How many of you, just by a show of hands, have you ever played the game Truth or Dare as a kid? Yes? Tim, you never played Truth or Dare? That surprises me. Really? Wow. Never played Truth or Dare? Who, show of hands, how many of you would do the Dare? How many did the Dare? Oh, okay. We got a little wild child out here, all right. How many of you do the truth? The easy way out. You do the truth, fantastic, right? Truth or Dare is a silly game. You either tell the truth about something deeply personal, or you act, or you accept the ridiculous dare. I remember one time, my wife, before she was my wife, and her best friend Haley were all playing Truth or Dare at her house. And it was the worst ever. Like, we were, we were just dare after dare after dare. And I was horrible. I told, like, Haley, Haley would never wanted to do truth, she'd always wanted to do dare. So I had her eat a spoonful of cinnamon one time. Sucked the moisture right out of her, she was coughing clouds of cinnamon everywhere. You know, can't even breathe. And then Angie, Angie stabbed me in the back. She goes, "Dare him to eat a tomato." And I did not like tomatoes. I, I don't know, the Lord has saved me. I know for some of you, we're like, I've been converted. But, like, prior to 21 years of age, when my taste buds finally changed, I, I, like a gag reflex would happen when I would eat a tomato. And Haley goes, "I dare you to take a bite out of a tomato." And I took a bite out of it, and I was like, I was, like, I was like, it was the worst thing I ever tasted in my life. The explosion of, you know, oh, just, just gross, it was horrible. So then to get back at Haley, I told her, "I dare you to eat an onion." And she took a big bite of that onion, and I was like, "Oh, that's so gross, it's so gross." But Truth or Dare, it's a fun game. If you haven't tried it, we're actually gonna play a game with, uh, Mrs. Gigglebox afterwards just for fun, so. We love you, Donna. Where are you, Donna? There she is. Yeah. Whether we prefer, prefer to take a dare or tell the truth, we know how powerful it could be when we tell or hear the truth. And conflict avoiding the truth may feel easier than facing our struggle. But speaking the truth in love helps restore relationships. And in this session, Brian will focus on the need for truth as we seek reconciliation. So before we get into it tonight, let's just pray together. Lord, we pray that, Lord, that your truth would reign in our hearts, our souls, and our minds. Father, may we not give any leeway to the father of lies, to the devil, when it comes to living in the truth, walking in the truth, speaking the truth, God, in all areas and aspects of our lives. God, sometimes we believe it's easier to just lie about the circumstances, lie to ourselves than it is to walk in the truth. And for some of us, we might feel like that's the truth, but it's never the truth, God. And so I pray that we would understand tonight the truth, the truth of who you are, the truth and the reality that we are sinners, that we are broken, that we need, we need the, what you did on the cross for us. But Father, we also need to realize the power of the cross so that we can see the power of the cross working in other people's lives as well. God, I pray that tonight, that we would be a group of people that are dedicated to this reconciliation process of repentance, of tru, of grace, and now of truth. And so, Lord, we thank you for this teaching, thank you for these wonderful weeks. Pray that you get all the glory, the honor, and the praise in your name. Amen. So, before we review the lesson, you know, I want you to pay attention to how, uh, Brian answers the following questions, and they are this. Who has the job of reconciliation? Secondly, what is essential for rich relationships? I don't think that means money. And what are three principles for stewarding truth? And that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Vanna White, AKA Chris Keith, to put on the screen. Vanna White, for some of you young people, is a game show host lady who used to work with a guy on a show called The Wheel of Fortune. I think she never aged, ever.
When the nation of South Africa began taking steps towards reconciliation, they decided that the only way this could happen was to take a deep dive into truth, to wrestle with the question of what happened and face the ugliness of their past. As you can imagine, many pushback. Why can't we just move forward? Why bring up all the ugliness and pain, they wondered? In his great book, No Future Without Forgiveness, Bishop Desmond Tutu responded to those who wanted to just move on without wrestling with the truth. Listen to what he says. Our common experience, in fact, is the opposite, that the past, far from disappearing or lying down and being quiet, has an embarrassing and persistent way of returning and haunting us unless it has been dealt with adequately. Unless we look the beast in the eye, we find it has an uncanny habit of returning to hold us hostage. What Bishop Tutu is acknowledging is a critical point when we talk about healing relationships, and that is there can be no reconciliation without truth. Truth and reconciliation in Philemon is a principle that Paul understands, which is why he takes the time and the risk to speak truth to Philemon and Onesimus. Remember, we said the book of Philemon gives us a framework for reconciliation with each of the three principal characters embodying an essential element to the process of reconciliation. Onesimus is repentance, Philemon is grace, and now we are going to see how Paul embodies truth. Onesimus makes his way to Rome when he reunites with Paul. Paul then leads him to faith in Jesus Christ, and along the way, he hears a bit of Onesimus' story, how he ran away from Philemon and stole from Philemon in the process. At some point, Paul realizes he has to deal with this, so he takes a deep breath and tells Onesimus something he does not want to hear. He has to go back and make things right with Philemon. This is hard and risky, because remember, the punishment for being caught as a fugitive slave is death by crucifixion. So for Paul to speak truth to Onesimus could cost Onesimus his life, and it could cost Paul's relationship with Onesimus. I want to stop right here and deal with the so-called elephant in the room. You know, as a black man, the book of Philemon is really challenging to me. I mean, just think about it. Paul is telling a runaway slave to go back to his master. Are you kidding me? I want Paul to scream at Philemon, "What are you thinking? We don't own people." See, I want Paul to be loud on emancipation when Paul is actually louder on something so much stronger and more devastating to the institution of slavery, and that is reconciliation. Paul understands that you can emancipate without being reconciled, but you can never reconcile without emancipating. And isn't this America's problem? Why does the race conversation keep coming up? Aren't you sick of talking about it? I know I am. But the reason why race just won't go away from us here in the United States is because we did emancipation back in 1865, but we've never done reconciliation. And guess whose job it is to reconcile? Not government, but the church. Why? Because reconciliation is a matter of the heart, and while government can change laws, it can never change hearts. It is the church of Jesus Christ, the people of God, who are to be at the front of the line, modeling to the world what true reconciliation looks like. And we will never do this without taking a deep dive into the truth. But on the other hand, Onesimus isn't the only one who needs to hear truth. So does Philemon. Look again at verses 15 and 16. "For this perhaps is why he was parted from you for a while, that you might have him back forever, no longer as a bondservant, but more than a bondservant, as a beloved brother, especially to me. But how much more do you, both in the flesh and in the Lord?" See the truth? Paul is saying to Philemon, "You have to lay down your rights to kill him and instead take him back not as a slave, but as a brother." We have no hope of deep, abiding relationships without truth. 1 John 1:7 says it this way. "But if we walk in the light as he is in the light, we have fellowship with one another; and the blood of Jesus, his Son, cleanses us from all sin." In the Bible, light is often a metaphor for truth. Notice that John connects the metaphor for truth with the phrase "fellowship with one another." John is showing us the only hope we have, and rich relationships with others is truth. The married couple is going to heal from the infidelity. They will need to take a deep dive into the truth of the betrayal and what led them there. If the friendship is going to be mended, then we have to talk about the lie that was told. And if the estranged parent has any hope of repairing the broken relationship with their child, then we have to have a discussion over why you abandoned them. There's just no easy way to say it. If a person isn't ready to talk about truth, then they aren't ready for relationship. Isn't that the gospel? We sinners have no hope of relationship with God without first acknowledging the truth of our sins. Even after coming to Christ, when we do sin, the Bible calls us to confess those sins, knowing that God is faithful and just to forgive us of our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. While the gospel is not about us stewing in our sins, at the same time, he does call us to be truthful about our sins. Truth is essential to a rich relationship with God and others. I hope you see the key role truth plays in our interactions with others. But the book of Philemon doesn't just show us the importance of truth, Paul also models for us how to steward truth. I want you to see truth like a scalpel. Scalpels can either be used to heal or harm. Either way, they will hurt. The difference between a scalpel that brings life and a scalpel that takes life is all about how you use it. As Paul writes Philemon, he gives us three life-giving applications for how to wield truth. The first principle we see in wielding truth is to remember that we are family. You don't need to spend a day in seminary to notice the familial terms Paul uses throughout the letter. In verse seven, he calls Philemon brother, and in verse 10, he calls Onesimus his child. Why this language? Because both Philemon and Onesimus are followers of Jesus Christ and adopted into the family of God. And it is this imagery of family which pushes Paul to push Philemon and Onesimus to reconcile. Over the years, I figured something out that you have. We are more likely to do the work of reconciliation with people we regard to be family than people we do not see as family. Growing up, I had an aunt who every month would call my dad and ask him for money to help with the rent. This would drive my dad crazy. I, I remember times watching my dad fuss at his sister all while he gave her the money for the rent. After watching one of these exchanges, I asked dad why he kept giving her money. I'll never forget what he said. "Because she's my sister, what am I gonna do? Let her be put out on the street?" Well, seven years later, my aunt died, and at the funeral, my dad was standing, uh, next to the casket, laughing and crying and laughing and crying. It was a strange sight. I said, "Dad, what's going on?" Dad said, "She got me in. Who do you think is paying for this? I know there's someone else there, and we can talk about enablement, but what kept my dad coming back was that this was his sister. And what should keep us coming back and doing the work of reconciliation is we are united as brothers and sisters in Christ." That's not to say we don't seek to reconcile with others, but it is to say Christians should be the first people to work things out, because we have the strongest bond, Jesus Christ. The second principle in stewarding truth to heal is to make sure we affirm the good before we address the bad. Notice what Paul does before he gets to the hard conversation of reconciliation. He affirms the good in Philemon. He tells him that he thanks God for him every time he prays for him. He says he's heard of Philemon's love for all the saints, along with his faith. And then Paul says these words in verse seven. "For I have derived much joy and comfort from your love, my brother, because the hearts of the saints have been refreshed by you." Now remember, he's talking to a slave owner. Don't you see what Paul is doing? He's refusing to take a picture of Philemon at his worst and only see him through that lens. But isn't that our temptation? To take a picture of people at their most sinful moment and always view them through that? Paul refuses to go down that road. Instead, he acknowledges something called nuance. We all have living inside of us right now, the flesh and the spirit, if you're followers of Christ, do war with one another constantly. We are sinners on the journey of sanctification. And when we refuse to see only the sin in each other, but to also see the beauty of what God is doing, and to affirm that first with people before we get to the hard matter of truth, then that sets people at ease for them to better receive the truth. So be sure to affirm the good in people before you have to call out the difficult. Finally, let's make sure we don't look to win the argument, but to win the relationship. Look at what Paul says in verse eight and nine. "Accordingly, though I am bold enough in Christ to command you to do what is required, yet for love's sake I prefer to appeal to you." Do you see what Paul is saying? As an apostle, this short book could have been even shorter. He could have flexed his apostolic authority, thrown down a trump card, and said something to the effect of, "Hey, Philemon, take him back as a brother because I said so. Sign. Your ecclesiastical master, the Right Reverend Bishop Apostle Paul." But he doesn't. Instead, Paul uses love as his weapon of choice, sending the message that he wants to win the relationship more than the argument. You know, I've been married now for several decades, and Corey and I have had more than a few arguments. Here's what I've learned. When I win, we lose. If truth for you is about winning the argument, you'll probably lose the relationship. Reconciliation is about people, so let's be wise in how we steward truth.
Before we continue with this Bible study tonight, I'd like to see by a show of hands, how many here have relationships that you would like to reconcile? How many here? It's a lot of hands. I am unbelievably proud of you for being here to get the tools and the biblical know-how to do that. Because the Lord is in the reconciling business. And if your heart is stirring inside of you for reconciliation, that's the heartbeat of your Savior. That's the heartbeat of our God, is that reconciliation. And so I'm glad that you are here tonight, wrestling with this, learning from this. So let's get into these three questions tonight. Who has the job of reconciliation? The church, yes. Why? Because reconciliation is a heart matter. It's a heart matter. And what is the, what is essential for rich relationships? Truth. That's right, it's truth. How many of you have ever had or seen relationships that are based off of lies? How long do those last? Right? They don't last long. Right? They are not rich. They are always, you're always, you know, lies, man, they're just rough. You're just always on eggshells, you're always, you know what I'm talking about, you know. They're rough. And then lastly, what are the three principles for stewarding truths? What are the three of them? The first one is, remember, we are family. That one's a big one. What's the second one? Affirm the good before addressing the bad. How many of us are good at addressing the bad? Well, you said blah, blah, you know what I mean, right? I mean, come on, in the words of Mary Poppins, "A spoonful of sugar makes the medicine go down," right? Mom, do you know that one? No, you weren't allowed to watch movies as a kid, never mind. All right, um, it's okay, we love you, Mom. Um, that's a movie, maybe we could watch it together, like a little date thing we could do together, that'd be sweet. But affirm, right, affirm the good before addressing the bad, right? And then the third one, and this is gonna be a lot for some of us, we're gonna have to swallow our pride. Don't look to win the argument, but win the relationship. Do you know how much humility that takes? So much humility. I'm learning that as a father. Oh, man. I'm telling you. Everybody asks me how, we just went camping with our family, we had a good Everybody asks me how, we just went camping with their family. We had a good time, right? But when your children are tired and they're hot, there's some whining and complaining and Pastor Joel gets a little bit tested. The Lord has helped me. Angie gave me the look a couple times. So thank you for your patience and grace, my love. So Brian opened by alluding to the, oh my gosh, here's this word again. This is such a hard word. Help me, people. Thank you. Post-apartheid, South Africa, to show how we must tell the truth about the wrongs we've committed for reconciliation to be possible. As Brian stated, there can be no reconciliation without truth. Do you agree that the truth is required for reconciliation? Why or why not? Christian's coming around with the microphone. He's ready for you. Why do you think truth is required for reconciliation? Tim? If it's a lie, it's only temporary. Ooh! That'll preach. That will preach. If it's a lie, it's only temporary. Okay, Stephen, did you have your hand up too?
To truly reconcile, you have to be vulnerable, and lying doesn't allow that.
No. It doesn't. Reconciliation requires that truth, for sure. It also, in one sense, it requires, as Stephen was saying, vulnerability. It's not just truth about the situation. It's truth about yourself and the role that you played in whatever offense might be there. And again, that's a pride thing that we talk about. What examples in your life influence your answer? What examples in your life influence your answer when it comes to this truth? I see that hand, Angie.
So I think, you know, the obvious way to look at it is if you're being truthful about something that you did, but also it's the other way, it's the opposite end of the spectrum. Like, you have to be truthful about how that person affected you.
Hmm, come on.
Because a lot of times, we can just be like, oh, yeah, it's fine. It's okay. I'm fine. But are you really? So I think that takes almost a little bit more humility to actually be honest with how you're feeling based on their actions. So I think there's more than just what we're thinking, oh, yeah, I need to be honest about what I did or own up to my mistakes. But it's like, how do you, how did that actually impact you? And sometimes we don't even know. We need to stop and analyze our own heart and like journal about it, pray through it, talk to trusted, you know, brother or sister in Christ to really get to that place where you know, okay, like, this is why that hurt me so much. And the why behind it is important as well, to not just be like, hey, I feel this way. Well, let me go deeper and tell you, like, hey, in my past, this is how I was raised, and that was a trigger for me because X, Y, and Z, my father or my mother did this, or... A lot of times, there's like a way deeper root that a lot of times we just, we sometimes forget to really think, put those pieces together, to give the person the whole picture. And it's really all about how you approach it, because you don't want to just be like attacking them. Hey, you did this to me, and I went through this, and blah, blah, blah. But just actually really making I statements of, I feel this way because I don't feel safe around you because, and just explain it that way. So sorry for my whole rant, but...
No, it's very insightful, Pastor Angie. Thank you so much. That was really good. Yes, Pam?
I just know in our, in our own personal life, like with Warren and I, early on in our marriage, I think I went into it with a lot of too high of expectation, you know, and plus I went in, a lot of things in my, in my past, in my life, that I did not deal with. And so I blamed him for a lot of things, you know? And over time, you know, I didn't realize it was affecting our relationship. And so there was, even, even when I would go to prayer, you know, I always, I always pray, you know, God, you need to change this man that you, you brought into my life, you know? Always wanting to change him, you know, and, and, um... But I remember, but I remember one time, you know, I was really, you know, I mean, I was really serious in my prayer, you know? I, you know, I need him to be this, and I need him to be that, and he's not being this, you know what I mean? It was always him. And, and I remember one time when I went into my prayer closet and I was, I started to pray, and God just clearly spoke to me. I mean, he just said, if you're coming to ask me to change him, don't bother. I'm not gonna listen to that prayer. I'm done with that prayer.
Wow.
And it's like, I was just so shocked. And I'm like, you know, I became very angry with God. I'm like, what do you mean? You know, and it's just like, I've done this, I've done that, what is, you know, blah, blah, blah. And, and he said, I'm just ready for you to face the truth about yourself.
Wow.
And, and I, I really got angry with God, and I really, I didn't pray for like two weeks. I said, fine. Because he said, if, if you're not ready to face you and deal with your issues, don't bother coming, because I'm not gonna listen to that prayer. I'm not listening to that prayer anymore. And so I became really angry with God, and for two weeks, I did not pray. And I mean, I just remember, I just became so miserable. And just, just a lot of things happened in that two weeks. But I finally broke. And, I mean, the Holy Spirit just kept drawing me, and I remember finally walking into that prayer room. And I, I mean, I really became hard, you know, towards God, and even more towards Him. But I remember finally, when I walked into that prayer, my prayer room, and I said, okay, God, I'm ready for you to, to deal with me. I'm ready to face the truth about me. And it's like, when I did, it was just like, everything just broke. I mean, I just began to sob. I just began to break. And the Holy Spirit just began to show me things from my past, from my present, in my marriage, in my family, in the church, all these issues that I didn't even realize I had. But He began to show. And I mean, it was, it was like, it wasn't an easy fix. I mean, it was like months that the Holy Spirit just kept dealing with me and showing me things and helping me face the truth about myself. And I just truly believe that if I had not done that and faced that truth, we wouldn't be together today. We would have never mended this relationship. But because I was willing to face the truth about myself and my issues, that's what then, you know, then He was able, then, we were able to talk. We were able to bring it together. He was able to, you know, bring some, you know, face some of His truth about Himself and me. And then we were able to, to really be able to reconcile things and talk about things.
Wow. Thank you so much, Pam, for sharing that, because I think that's something that, that's a pill that we all need to swallow. You know? And it's, it really is the Lord saying, hey, you need to look at yourself too. Right? You need to look at yourself and look at some of the things that you've been through. And I'll just say this, I've, I've shared this with you before, that fine is a swear word in our family. I've told you that. I've used the demonstration in one of my sermons. Because I really, I think when you say that as either a knee-jerk reaction or whatever, I just think that there's something deeper. Now, you'd be like, well, Pastor Joel, you're over-analyzing things. Well, I've just known a few people in my life who that knee-jerk reaction of saying fine, it's really not fine. There's something really going on in the deeper parts. They just don't want to take the time to look at it. Right? So that's what we teach our, our children then too as well, so. So in verses forty-seven, Paul's words prepare Philemon for Paul's request to charitably receive Onesimus. In verse nine, Paul says he could use his position to command Philemon to do as he says, but instead, he chooses to ask. Paul's example shows us that when we deliver truth, we should be humble and kind, treating people with dignity and respect. How have you learned to approach others with humility when speaking the truth? And how can we practice humility in difficult interactions? For those of you who have been through a process of reconciliation, please, share your wisdom with us tonight on how you learn to approach others with humility when speaking the truth. Yes? Yeah, yeah, Mike's coming. He's so fast.
Well, when I became saved, and especially as a mother, I thought, I'm not ever gonna divulge things that I did to my children, you know? The problem is with that, when you don't divulge anything and you put yourself way up there like a Pharisee, and it's hard, you see? When they start doing things, and let me tell you something, they can be in nothing but youth groups. They can be in all kinds of stuff for the church. And let me tell you something, sin still finds a way to sneak itself in. And when you start making yourself so high and mighty that they're afraid to come to you, because that is one of the things they said to me that actually, actually woke me up. Said, be yourself. You can't help somebody if you can't be humble enough to tell them how God got you through that circumstance. And I had to tell them things that really I was ashamed of. And I learned that being a little more truthful, it helped them to come to me a lot. And they'd say, Mom, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? And I'd say, well, let's see what God's word says. And I said, because that way you put God on the seat and you're not in there. But, and I had to learn it with marriage too, because at the time, my husband was not saved, and it was not a happy household. Because everything I taught them was being stretched to another direction. And I just said, Lord? And the Lord spoke to my heart. You're trying to do my work. You let it go and let God. You do your part as a good wife and mother, and I will tend to the rest. And let me tell you, when I started letting go, I started seeing things moving in God. And, and I'm still working at it. But I learned another thing too. The worst part about Donna Clip is probably her temper. And I had to learn, listen to the Holy Spirit. If He says, you're too angry to go talk to your, because I wouldn't let something go. My husband will actually walk away from an argument. Not old me. And, and it was that, you know how you would say, fine? There's tones to that.
Yeah. I'm fine. Ooh, that one.
And he'd say, I heard you say that. And I said, you don't talk to me that way. And really, I had to learn, and the Holy Spirit said, no, don't talk to Him now. You go to Him when you can learn to control that. And it's not one of the gifts of the Spirit. He said, you're supposed to be Holy Spirit-filled. So guess who he dealt with first? Like, like Pam was saying, me. And when I learned to try to listen to God first, things started moving a little better. And some things happened, and then the Lord put it all in His lap. And He said, I'm gonna start going to church with you. And after that, He said, I'm gonna start. He said, I talked to Pastor Lloyd, and I gave my heart to the Lord. And then He did pray with me again. Then we went to Christian counseling, and we both got counseling, and let me tell you, it's worth it, folks. And, you know, what I found out, some things about myself I didn't like. And for instance, and please, this is just mainly adults in here. I was raised in a home where you didn't talk about anything to do with that three-letter word, at all. And so when my husband got me a, you know, he, he started thinking about another woman. When I was 125 pounds, I was too fat. So he bought me this sexy negligee. And I said, you take this white trash stuff back to that store you got it at. And he hurt, it hurt him. I, I, he actually got hurt. And he didn't bother with me for a month, and I, the Lord dealt with me about it. He said, when I make the marriage bed, and it's under my blood, there's nothing evil about that. And I had to learn. I had to learn. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to be frank.
No, no, it's cool. We got it. We're getting it.
Well, why is it, why is it that we have...
We're keeping it PG-13 for people online right here. Chris, make sure it says on YouTube, not made for kids. Okay? Make sure that button's clicked.
This is X-rated. No, I'm sorry. No, I had to, I had to learn. I had to learn to be submissive. And I didn't like that part.
Okay, that's obedience right there. I think, all right, we're gonna close on that one. No. This is truth or dare right now, for sure. And Donna took the truth bomb real hard there. You know, I, I know this is a moment of, of fun and humor, but, but, but there's so much in that that we could just unpack, just for a moment, okay? Because the Lord was dealing with Donna on multiple levels that affected multiple levels, not only of her relationship with her Lord, but affected her children, affected her husband, affected her relationship, affected her intimacy. I mean, layers upon layers upon layers upon layers. And the truth is, is that it all came down to a point of her saying, okay, I can't paint an image of myself that's not true, that's not real. I can't live, and it wasn't even necessarily that you were lying to your children. You were just withholding the truth, right? You were withholding that element of, and so for some of us, we're like, well, you know, we don't wanna, you know, we're gonna withhold that information and, you know, use the Holy Spirit's sermon for what you're gonna disclose, obviously with your children. But for, you know, for you, Donna, to, to share that, that, that took humility. And in that humility, we see it, it created conversation. It created relationship. And maybe one of those pragmatics that we can talk about when we practice humility in difficult interactions is just start with your story. And say, hey, listen, I'm not perfect. I'm not fine. I'm really not fine. I've got some things that are going on, right? And be able to have this conversation. It makes it more relatable. It makes, it makes it more connected, you know? So Brian shared three principles for sharing truth as we, as we seek reconciliation. The first is remembering we are family. Paul uses family language throughout this letter to remind Philemon that as Christians, Philemon and Onesimus belong to God and each other. We are also a part of the family of God, which means we are connected to each other. What can change about your attitude and your actions when we view other Christians as family? What do you think would change if we viewed each other as family? Say what, babe? A little softer? Mm-hmm, yep. Little bit of warmth? You might be more open? More understanding? More gracious? Right? More tolerant? Might give a little bit more time? It's different when you treat them with family. It's a lot different when you can view Christians as family. There's also a level of, of burden that you have with that person. Because if you know that they're struggling, if you know that they're dealing with something, you, you, there's a burden that you want to help them along as well. It's not that you're gonna take it completely on yourself, but to bear one another's burdens. There's a, there's a, there's a responsibility that you feel towards one another. And so I actually want to break this, this question, this next one is, how does it work practically to see other Christians as family in the middle of conflict? Just pause real quick. How does it work to practically see other Christians as family? I just want us to answer that question. How do we practice viewing Christians as family? What are some things that you do to practice seeing Christians as family? Before we get to the conflict part. What do you do? You encourage one another. Love that. What else? What are some other things that you do to help view other Christians as family? You care for them. You pray for them. What else do you do? You check up on them. Yes. What are some other things? You spend time with them, right? One of my favorite things is sharing meals. Can I get an amen? Yes. Right? Love sharing meals. Lots of meals. Too many meals, right? What are some other things that we do? We give? When there's needs? Right? These are familial types of things that we do with people, with our family. So the same way that we, we treat our family is the same ways that we could be doing as practicing others. Now, that's gonna be like, these people are strangers, right? I don't know who these people are, right? You know, I only see them on Sundays, so how can I really be family with them? And that's where the work goes into it. Because to have a relationship, to practice, to spend time with somebody, that's the word, it takes time to get to know somebody, to treat them as family. The beauty is that the church as a whole is supposed to be treating each other as a family. So even if it's a stranger, but they're a believer, they're family because we have the same spirit inside of us. So now that we can view people in the church, other Christians as family, now apply that same principle in the middle of conflict. And so the question as a whole, how does it work to prac, work practically to see other Christians as a family in the middle of conflict? How do we do that? How do we treat them differently? How do we encourage them? How do we love them? Yes, Angie?
Speak the truth and love.
Yep. Speak the truth and love. Hello? Yes? Sense of humility. Yes. Yeah. I think another one is this, is that sometimes we need to get over our fear of what our truth is going to do to that person. Does that make sense? Oh, if I tell them the truth, then they're gonna be hurt, then they're gonna be offended, then they're not gonna receive it, or... But as Pastor Angie said, truth and love. And a lot of times, we can't control what people's responses are gonna be. We can't. But if we are in the work of reconciliation... But if we are in the work of reconciliation, as Christ has asked us to, and there's a ministry of reconciliation, it's close to the heart of God, we gotta trust the Holy Spirit, that he's the one that's gonna lead us in those moments. And that we do our part to tell the truth with this familial-type attitude and grace and humility and allow him to do the work. Yes, Wendy?
I don't know if anybody else has this going on in their mind or heart, but not all of us feel comfortable opening our heart and treating people like family because pain is on the other side. Difficulty with trust is out there.
Wait, wait, pause real quick. What you just said there, Wendy, you said, "Pain is on the other side." Pain is on the other side of you opening up? Or pain is on the other side of that person and you being...
Not necessarily that person, but pain in the past.
Pain in the past, yes, okay, thank you.
Pain in the past, uh, not wanting pain in the future and not wanting to trust a person. Care and love, but that, that opening, um, you know, I'm listening to y'all and the love of Christ and loving of people, but it, it's also very hard for some of us.
Thank you for sharing that, Wendy. And that's the truth. That, that is the truth. It is hard. But in the family of Christ, right? There is redemptive purpose. There is, although at times, we're, and we even talked about it, he talked about this in Lesson One, the reality is that we are going to hurt one another, right? I don't like to say that, I'm like, "Oh, hey, we're gonna..." As a regular thing that's gonna happen, but we are sinners. We make mistakes. We hurt people. We say things. We act in a specific way. But within the economy of Christ, when we take the leap of faith to open our hearts to being in that family situation, although there's pain in front of it, I think that there can be healing on the other side. Because if our past is full of pain, that maybe wasn't from a church, or maybe it was from a church, hurt or pain or whatever, and now God is bringing you into a new thing, we could possibly be shutting the door to the healing work that God's trying to do in us because we're shutting out a family that can heal us, right? There's been many students that I've worked with in the years that they have not grown up with healthy family figures in their life. They don't know what a healthy family is, but they literally would attach themselves to Angie and I's hip and come to our house and see how he treated our children and loved our children and spoke to our children. And they got to see a glimpse of how a mother and a father loved their child and talked to their child and don't talk down to their child, or don't abuse their child, don't hurt their child, but equate their child, love their child, listen to their child. And that's healed parts in their hearts for them to see what a real, healthy family looks like, just we're not perfect in any way, shape, or form. But they got to see that example. And I believe that healed a part of who they are because they realize, okay, that, that's not the norm. The pain is not the norm, but the redemption and the reconciliation of Jesus, that's the norm. That make sense? Just, I love you, Wendy, you know, I know you hurt me. I love you so much. Pastor Herschel?
Yeah, one, one of the issues that we're always concerned about is the person we go to. How are they going to respond? I'm gonna tell a story that I've, I may, I probably have told it here before, but I'm gonna tell it again. In one church we pastored, we had a softball team, very good softball team. We used it as a discipling tool for young, 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 for young men. But, uh, we were playing one particular game when one of my leaders in the church had a cousin on the opposing team. And both these men are leaders in their churches. But they got into it. And before that game was over, they were literally toe-to-toe threatening each other, getting ready to slug it out, and I had to go break them up. I went back to my, to the, back to my home, thought about it, prayed about it. "Lord, how do I do with this?" He's one of my leaders. I can't let this go unchecked. It has to be dealt with. And I prayed overnight, went to him the next day, went to his house. This guy is one of the, probably one of the best givers in the church. He's a wealthy businessman. And, uh, and I confronted him with him and I called him by name and, and I said, "This is no way to act among these young men we're trying to disciple to follow Christ." I says, "You owe every one of them an apology for the way you acted." And, uh, and I was surprised by his response. He says, "You're right, Pastor. I was out of line. My cousin was out of line." And your cousin's not the issue, you're the issue. You know, you were out of line. That's, you was not showing these young men how Christ deals with conflict. And, and he acknowledged that and that he would make it right with the team, with all those young men, and apologized to them. And the next day was Sunday. And his mother-in-law lived right next door to me. And they always went home after church to his mother-in-law for lunch. And while he was there, he came over to my house, knocked on my door. He says, "Pastor, I saw something in this magazine," or this, actually a gossip newspaper, "that I thought you might wanna look at." Uh, so I thanked him, folded it up, sat it down on my coffee table, didn't pay a lot of attention to it because I didn't like that particular magazine anyway. But later in the day, I finally unfolded it. And there in the middle of it was a $500 bill. I was so concerned about him being offended by my confrontation. And his way of saying, "Thank you for what you did."
Wow. Amen. So the moral of the story is tell the truth and 500 bucks is coming your way. Amen, brother. Amen. See, thank you Pastor Herschel for sharing that, because there's a lot of depth to that. He was a, a leader in the church, an influential man, a businessman, a top giver, right? That's a, that's a scary thing to confront. But to do the truth, to say it in love because it's the right thing, reconciliation, God honors that stuff. Paul admitted he wanted to keep Onisimus with him, but he knew the right action was to send Onisimus back to Philemon and encourage them to reconcile. And Paul shows us that loving correction often means speaking the truth, even though it might be more uncomfortable to stay quiet. Have you experienced loving correction? And how did it feel to be corrected with love and truth? I'm gonna take this one, if you guys don't mind. My wife. My wife is the most loving, gracious, kindest woman ever. But there's, I don't know about you guys, husbands in here, but there's some times when your wife just says the right thing, you know, and then all of a sudden you turn into a bear. You know what I'm talking about? Not like mean, just like, yeah. So there is, there's been a handful of times where my wife has come to me and she's so delicate and kind. And for some odd reason, you think I've learned the lesson by now. You're not my enemy. You are not coming against me. You are, you care, right? You've heard that, Zach, before? Have you heard that one before? Right, all, all the husbands say amen. She's not my enemy. She loves me. She cares about me. And I've had to learn to get comfortable with loving correction, right? Angie and I are on two opposite ends. Like, we're on two opposite ends. I, I have had foot and mouth disease for a long time. And many a time, we've gotten in the car and she'd be like, "Why did you say that?" And I'm like, "I have a condition. Didn't take my meds today." Right? And so Angie has, I have experienced loving correction many, 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 many times. And how it feels to be corrected with love and truth is this, it's uncomfortable. Because you're being faced with the reality of maybe something that you've done wrong or something that you could've done better. And so again, there's a really common theme in the middle of this truth. I don't know if you're seeing it, but there's a lot of humility that has to go around with truth. And so when you're being lovingly corrected, there's a feeling that's gonna well up inside of you. And I think that sometimes is the flesh trying to push back on the truth of the reality. And a lesson that I have learned is that when I get defensive, it's probably because it's hitting a nerve. This is being, okay, alright, alright, alright. Calm down, calm down. Angie's gonna, yo, I, I, I take back everything I said. Look, camera's on me. I take back everything I said, right? That's immediately, that's all back, I'm just kidding. That's the flesh. See, Mary's correcting me already. Mary is lovingly correcting me. She goes, "That's the flesh, Pastor Joel, that's the flesh." See, she got it. Dang it, Mary! See, I'm learning. No, but friends, listen, when you start to get defensive, check your heart. You gotta check your heart. Why is it getting you so upset? If the person that is lovingly correcting you, alright, they're not yelling at you, they don't got your, they don't have you, you know, listen, you, you know, they're not doing any of that action right there, right? There's a loving, and you're getting defensive over it, hey, that might be a tall-tale sign that maybe, just maybe, what they're saying is the truth. It's an indicator. So before Onisimus became a Christian, he stole and ran away from Philemon. When he became a brother in Christ, he still needed to face his previous sins. And we all come to Christ at different times with varied baggage from the past decisions. And while our sins are completely forgiven, we still deal with earthly consequences of our actions. We don't like that. We don't like that. We don't like that feeling. It's uncomfortable. And so the question is, what baggage followed you into your, into your new walk with Christ? And who did God bring into your life to help you face the truth of your wrongdoing? Maybe this is something that God has delivered you from, something he set you free, something that you were doing, and then God brought someone in your life to say, "Hey, have you thought about it this way? Anybody got a story? Anybody got a..." Come on now. Unless we're all just continually living in sin. I hope that we're all, have been delivered. Anybody have a friend that has come by and said, "Hey, idiot..." No, I'm just kidding. "Why are you doing that?" No, I'm just kidding.
Yes. Friends. But one that I trusted outside the Lord has been Levi Sashell. And I would tell her things that I told the Lord. And she'd say, "Well..." She never condemned you, not once. Not once did I hear it reverberate through anybody else. I knew it was a good, good person to trust. And she'd say, "I'll pray for you tonight." And if we were in church, she prayed with me right then. And she'd say, "Have you ever think maybe he might have a point?" And it make me think, well, maybe I'm only thinking of self, because self is the biggest thing that'll get in your life. And you don't even recognize it. Because the Bible says, "Your heart is deceived, being wicked." Who can know it? Only God knows our hearts. So, and that inspirates a lot of things that we do that we're not even aware we're doing. But yes, she's been one, and then many others, pastors' wives and, and different people, you know, would say, "Hey, you know, I'm going through something." And you were shocked because I used to think, you know, that's crazy. And then maybe y'all were the same way. The pastors, it must be wonderful to live with a pastor and, you know, they never have an argument.
It is, ask my wife.
And finally, I had one say, "You gotta pray for my husband." Because my mother grew up with him. And she said, "Sometimes he's hard-headed." And I said, "He is?" You know? And I was like, "You know something, Lord? We're all human. We were born in the human family, but thank God you came to rescue us, all of us. Because there's no big eyes and little me's." You know? And I'm grateful, you know? Now I can look back and I'm grateful for what trials I've been through. Before, I'd say, "Why, God?" Like a little kid comes to her dad and exasperates him, "Why, why?" And he'd say, "I'll show you in due time." And when I started helping with the missionaries and I started doing Sunday School class that nobody wanted to take them on, they were pre-teens, I was into shock mode. Because things that I didn't know till I got married, they were asking me about. "Did you have a French kiss when you were 12, 13 years old?" I said, "No, I was lucky I got my first pair of stockings at 12 years old." I was in shock, and I wanted to give up the class.
Lock down, land the plane, land the plane.
No. The Lord wanted me to proceed teaching. I didn't want, I thought, "Lord, what's coming next? I'm not up for this." And the Lord said, "Yes, because if you don't, they're gonna learn the way you learned."
That's good.
They're gonna have the devil come in and say, "Let's, let's, let's talk about this through his methods." So I was grateful for those horrible things that I went through. Because he still came out on top. You're on top when you ride with the Lord.
Yeah. Let's talk about that for a second, Donna. So we've talked about this a couple of times, where we as a church need to get better at receiving correction from other people, right? But this is also talking about how we also lovingly reconcile and correct other people, right? So the big, the big deal for us is if there is a sin, and this is, you know, everybody watching online and everybody here, right? If everything is covered under the blood of Jesus and sin has lost its power over us, okay? So then why, when somebody calls those things out lovingly, should we get upset about those things? I think the only reason why we do is because of the flesh pushing back. Does that make sense? So if we could be a church that has that much grace, that walks in the truth, and the truth is that sin has lost its power. Christ broke the power of sin off of you and me. So that if there is a sin that we don't even know that we're committing, or we are committing, and Tim says, "Hey, Pastor Joel, you're doing this wrong," right? And I am, my initial response shouldn't be a defensive one, because he's coming to me in love. And I've already know, if I'm walking in the truth and I know that that thing is broken off of me and the Lord has sent that person into my life to help me, as Donna said with Levi Sashell, that, that God, that she went to, and Levi Sashell would talk to her, our counselor, and I know many of you, there have been people in your life that have maybe come alongside and said, "Hey, you know, sometimes you get a little hot-headed. Sometimes some words come out that, you know, aren't very reflective of the real character that I see that's inside of you." Or maybe, hey, sometimes you see there's a little bit of lack of self-control in some areas. And instead of us getting all, huh, huh, you know, getting all worked up about it, we can say, "Thank you for coming to me because I see that you love me enough to tell me." Hello? You love me enough to tell me so that I don't continue to walk down this path of destructiveness. You love me so much as a family member that you would say, "Hey, the car is, the train is coming, get out of the way." And we need to get, we need to get better at that. We need to stop being afraid of telling the truth. We need to learn to do it in love. And I love how we've been going through this book because it is walking us through these things of Paul starting off with grace and love and kindness and thinking about the relationship rather than winning the argument. So before Onisimus became a Christian, right? So I'm sorry, the second principle Brian shared is affirm the good before addressing that. Paul models this principle for us in verse seven, when he praises Philemon's love and care for other believers, recalling the good in a person before confronting the bad changes our posture and can impact the response of the one being confronted. Have you found yourself looking at a person through the lens of their mistakes? And how did having a negative view of that person affect how you treated them? I think when we have a negative view of somebody, there's a lack of grace. There's a lack of grace. And what have, what might have been different if you looked for the good in the person first? Could be different if you look for the good in the person instead of looking at the... Remember, we talked about the scorecard? Looking at somebody else's sins and mistakes? This would really affect us if we looked for the good in the person first. Anybody? If you don't wanna take that one? That might be differently? Yes, Angie? Brother Richard over here just said, "They could be more receptive." Right, yes. Pastor Angie?
I was gonna say, a lot of times if we're looking at a person...
I was gonna say, a lot of times if we're looking at a person through the lens of their mistakes, and like having a negative view of that person, I know at least for me, sometimes I just wanna distance myself and just be like, "Okay, well, that's a negative. There's a negative quality, so that makes me uncomfortable. So I'm just gonna distance myself and not talk to them about it, and just kinda do my own thing, and let them find their own friends or whatever that fit better in their life." But like, I always have to catch myself and remind myself, well, like, if they're the body of Christ, rather than just distancing yourself, really the, the loving thing to do would be to go to them and say like, but obviously start with the positives, like, "Hey, I see you as, you know, these great characteristics in you, and I could potentially see us being great friends and like having a close, tight bond, but like, this, this thing like is hindering that, and I don't want that to happen." So just approaching it with, in love, rather than just feeling uncomfortable, so just removing yourself from the situation. That's what you would do to like, just any old friend, not somebody who's family. You know what I'm saying? That's like taking the easy way out. But if somebody who's family, like they're family, you know, just like, he talked about the, his dad with the sister, like, "Well, she's my sister, so I'm gonna be there for her." Like, if we had that view of people, rather than just saying, "Well, that's a negative thing, I'm just gonna distance myself." Like, push yourself to have that conversation, because they're worth putting in the extra effort, because they're the family of God.
That's so good. Wendy, I see the hand. There you go.
I, um, being a teacher for years, and having had only my own daughters, uh, boys and girls are different creatures. And, uh, I remember for years, um, I didn't like little boys. They're just, I mean, in terms of keeping them seated in the classroom and behaving themselves, and I, I was, I held, uh, like a, not because I, they were just, they were boys, they were boys. And I didn't appreciate their little boyhood. And, and all, and the little girls would be just so cute, but they wouldn't get caught in their sly stuff. But I, you know, I could catch them too, but sometimes. But anyway, um, I, I just assumed, and I, I made them behave. It wasn't until I started having grandsons, and I got, I got, um, seven of grandsons now. Um, it wasn't until I got grandsons that I began, I, I, that, I began to love their, the way about them, you know? I don't, I don't care if they can't sit still. I don't care if they break things, you know? It's, it's a love that's gone past that. Uh, I treat them differently, and I'm thinking, "Lord, why didn't I..." 'Cause I was hard on those boys in my classes. I was, I was tough on them, and I'd, I'd send them out of there, they didn't, didn't behave. But my little grandsons, it's a whole different ballgame. And so I spoil them rotten, and I love them dearly. And, and they do behave, but I don't have the same stricture that I did. And so I, I, I love little boys now. So that's, it, it, that's what changed.
That's what changed. Can you hand it down to Tim? Tim?
I was just reminded of, um, during the days when Jesus walked on this earth, He, He was amongst sinners all the time. Showing and sharing, and so there shouldn't be no difference, no difference in that with us to help reconcile relationships. And, um, the Holy Spirit, we have that today to help us reconcile, and let's try to use it and do what's right, and I like this lesson plan.
It's a good one.
'Cause I don't live in a perfect world, and I have a lot of people I love who don't see eye to eye with me, but this is gonna help for God's glory.
Yeah, that's good.
And just like you say, that in the church, this is probably the biggest, I think this is the biggest issue of learning how to deal with conflict.
Yeah.
And we've, we have really failed at it.
Yeah.
Over the years.
We have, yes.
Yeah.
We gotta be better.
This is good, yeah.
Gotta be better at it, yeah. If you haven't already, I really highly encourage you to go and take these deeper sections and walk through them. Specifically, last week's lesson, there was a part in there that addressed how to reconcile with somebody you can't, that doesn't want reconciliation. That is a huge, huge step. So go back in your notes. Look at the going deeper section. Take five or 10 minutes and just read through them and answer the questions yourself. But it really gives you some deeper pragmatics for you to say, "Okay, I've tried reconciliation, it's not working. Where, where do I go from here? What's the next step from here?" Pam?
My situation was total opposite of Wendy's, 'cause I had boys. I didn't have, had any idea what to do with a girl. You know, so when my youngest son got married, I really did not know how to connect with my daughter-in-law. Um, you know, to me, my, I was, I grew up as a tomboy. Um, my sister was the one that was girly, girly, and all of her life was just so much drama. So I always thought, "Oh my gosh, if I had a girl that's drama, 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 I could deal with the boy stuff," you know what I mean? But the drama from the girls, I can't deal with this. So, but looking at from the family, we're talking, we're talking about family. Okay, she's now my family, okay? And they were both raised in a similar God churches. She was raised in a similar God church. But as she got older, she got out of college, she turned from her faith, and she decided to go the way of the world. And, um, so my son decided to go the way of the world with her. And so it really became a struggle, um, for me of how to relate. Um, you know, not being preachy, because, you know, they didn't really wanna hear anything we had to say about it. So it's just like, we were very careful what we said and how we dealt with things when we were there. And then of course, when my grandson came along, and, and she was talking about how, how she was wanting to raise my grandson, and they're both talking about how raising my grandson, they want, they want him to know all the religions, so that he can choose for himself what he wants, you know, who he wants to serve. So they're talking about all this stuff, and I'm like, you know, and I just like, and because, but, but hearing all that, it, you know, I really, um, I really was not respectful in the way that I should have been as the Christian, you know? Um, and plus, they're family, you know? And so it become a struggle, but I, I just, you know, I always, and just like what he said, every time I was around her, I always see, I'd always just view the things that she didn't believe. I viewed the things that were different between us, you know? And, and so I had to, there again, go back in my prayer closet, and I had to really pray and say, "Okay, God, I really need your help, 'cause I can't do this on my own. I need you, Holy Spirit, to help me to see the good things, to see the things we agree on, and, you know, help me to have the right answer, um, when she brings things up, and not be just always negative and always, you know what I mean? And just religious about it." But, but to really work on that relationship, no matter how different we are, you know, and just trying to find that, that, you know, way of connecting with her, even though we're so different, but, you know, but I can't do it on my own. The Holy Spirit has to help me.
Yeah.
We cannot do it on our own. We need the Holy Spirit to connect with certain people, but, but we have to do it. You know, because, you know, she's now, we're family, and so, you know, we just came back from 10 days at their house. And I will tell you, I think this past visit was probably one of the best visits
Oh, praise God.
we had with them.
That's awesome.
You know what I mean? And so it was, it was just a really good, it was a really good time.
It's great. Well, Paul begins with affirming the good. He does move to truth. In verses eight to sixteen, Paul explains Onesimus' situation to Philemon, how he hopes Philemon will respond. Paul navigates the tension of stewarding the truth when he draws attention to what Philemon does well, and then points to what Philemon needs to change. In the same way, we can treat people in front of us with dignity when we affirm the good and lovingly speak the truth. What does it look like to speak the truth in God-honoring way? And how have your relationships benefited when you chose to speak the truth in love? For sake of time, we're gonna continue on, because I really want us to get to the relationship element there. In verse seventeen, Paul writes, "Welcome, Onesimus," as you would welcome me. He's asking Philemon to treat Onesimus the same way that he would have treated Paul, had the letter been hand-delivered by Paul. In the same way, Christians can treat those who have hurt them with the same dignity and respect as Paul expected Philemon to give Onesimus. What does it look like when you welcome others with kindness regardless of how they treat you? And what makes it difficult to maintain this perspective when you've been wronged by the person standing in front of you? If I could have just one of you take this one, and then we'll go on to the third principle real quick. What does it look like when you welcome others with kindness regardless of how they treat you? And what makes it difficult to main this perspective, maintain this perspective, when you've been wronged by the person standing in front of you? Brother Jeff. Podcast Jeff.
Yeah, I, I've mentioned a few times, uh, a friend of mine from, uh, our last place of living in Manassas named Dennis. Uh, I knew him for 10 years. Uh, he, he actually went to the same college I went to. That's how we got connected. But he, uh, he was an easy guy to turn away from. He, he would, you know, throw all kinds of good reasons for me to walk away. And God just kept telling me, "No, Jeff, that's wrong. You just need to love Dennis." And, uh, he did it over politics, he did it a little bit with religious questions, but, uh, God just kept showing me to go back and stay there, and, and he, he received it. He, he welcomed me back, and I, and I was excited about that, that I had a lost friend who was willing to welcome me back. So, that's it.
I think what makes it difficult to maintain this perspective is when you've been wronged by the person standing in front of you, it's just that, it's that, the lens. So you're looking with pain. You're looking with sin. You're looking with regret or frustration, whatever it is, and that's at the forefront. And as Pam was saying, the only way that we can get that, that relief, that recalibration, that new lens is through the Holy Spirit. It's through walking in the truth that though that person might not know it, the Lord has forgiven them. Right? And so though they have hurt you, though they have done horrible things or said horrible things, and you're extending the olive branch and trying to live in this ministry of reconciliation, although they have hurted, you are, and I mentioned this last week, you are getting closer to the heart of Jesus. You just are. Because that's Him. We were all reconciled. We have all hurt Him. We have all betrayed Him. We have all sinned against Him. And yet He chose reconciliation for you and for me. And then says, "Hey, follow in the ministry of reconciliation." You can do this. He doesn't ask us to do something that we cannot do, that His Spirit cannot empower us to do. And the third principle Brian shared is not to look to win the argument, but to win the relationship. And all the husbands said, "Amen." Philemon faced a choice. He could win the argument by punishing Onesimus, or win the relationship by reconciling with Him. In our conflict, we face the same choice. Winning the relationship doesn't mean we avoid the truth. It means we speak the truth with the goal of maintaining or restoring the relationship. This means we intentionally watch what we say, and how we say it, and how we communicate it, and how we deliver it. If you were with us at the marriage conference with Tony and Sue, there was a big thing that he talked about, about delivering the package, the information that you want your spouse to know, right? Sometimes it's about knowing when to deliver it, how to deliver it, how to clearly communicate it. And those are really big principles, right? Right? Short, sweet to the point, right? Not fast, but, and these are principles that we need to get into our minds when it comes to restoring the relationship. And so it says, "How is facing your conflict with the aim of winning the relationship changed the way that you spoke the truth? And what challenges might you face in seeking to preserve the relationship while speaking honestly?" I see that hand, Wendy. Yes.
It helps to, uh, know who you're speaking with, because you may not speak the same language as that other person. Um, a lot that, a lot of time that happens in marriages. You've got two opposites. And I've, I've got an opposite too. I love nothing better than have a good fight. And I've got a husband who is the kindest, most gentle. Um, and he doesn't, he doesn't like conflict. And I like to get things settled and get him out in the open and everything, and that, uh, amen, she says amen.
Donna, it said amen, that's right. I'm coming for you. She's like, "Don't you walk away from me."
And so, uh, not every, not everybody, they don't speak the same language. So, uh, speaking love, and, and I like criticism. I like straightforward piano lessons, music lessons. You, you, you do it right. And you, you know, I got years of, uh, of tough, tough teachers, which I love. I love being, um, talking, Frank, you know, this subtle thing doesn't work with me. So, anyway, the whole, uh, communication, relationship, uh, we have to be wise.
Yes.
And understand the other person's viewpoint, which is kinda hard to do when you don't speak that language. But that's, that's the big thing, sending the package so it can be received, not sending the missile so it, it explodes.
The missiles. That's perfect language, yes. Let me, let's do this real quick. Let's, let's, how many of you are like Wendy? Yes, I see those hands. Notice that the majority of them are women, gentlemen. Just notice how... Oh, yeah, you got an answer, Tim? Okay, fantastic.
All the women who are like Wendy,
Yeah.
and I've learned it the hard way.
Yeah, that's right. I was like, "That's right!" She's in the back.
Yeah, well, here's what I learned. So we have an argument, but it's always settled, and I always get the last word.
Mmm.
And it's, and it's, "Yes, dear."
Yes! Let's go! Let's go, Tim! That's right, always have the last word. I caution you, for those of you who are that, uh, conflict resolution people, it's good. I like that, Wendy. I love it. I love direction. Bible says, "A fool despises correction." For some of us, that it's not so easy to come by, we'd be a little bit more passive, more whatever, um, that is something that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work on, right? But, and the lesson that we're trying to learn here is about winning the relationship and not the argument, is we've got to be intentional with our words, right? And so, you know, Wendy's saying, "Let's do this thing." You know, Jim's walking away, and she's grabbing him by his 17, uh, what are those things? Overalls that he's got. Get back here, right? Maybe that might not be the, he's got, he's strapped up. You know, I don't know if you've ever seen him. He's strapped up. Um, that's what it is. Thank you. I don't, what did I say? Overalls, same thing. I don't know. There's some straps involved. All that to be said, right, sometimes we need to read the room. Hello? Why are y'all laughing? Did I say something wrong? The disclaimer's right here, okay? This is Wednesday. We probably should have disclaimers every Wednesday night. Oh my goodness. I love it. So Brian closes this year sharing what it looks like when he argues with life. He says, "When I win, we both lose." When your goal is to win the argument, no one wins. No one wins. But when we choose to value the relationship, we can share the truth in a way that honors that person and God, and leads to reconciliation. I'll let you, in your own way, work out the pragmatics of this last question. In addition, maybe write down a person that this lesson has helped you now see them as family, not as an outsider. Being able to see the good in them, and fighting for the relationship, and not the argument. Paul wrote his, the short letter to Philemon, but his, his instructions for reconciliation is relevant to Christianity today. As my mom so elegantly put, and I agree, the church needs to get better at this. If Philemon and Onesimus will face conflict, we will sin against each other. As Brian pointed out, Christians should be the first ones. We've gotta be the example, the first ones to work things out. God wants us to be people of reconciliation who seek to forgive and be forgiven. When we've been wronged, we should respond with grace and forgiveness. And when we speak the truth in a way that values the relationship, we can experience authentic and fruitful reconciliation with one another. Heavenly Father, I thank you for my friends. Lord, I thank you for this wonderful, wonderful series. God, that's been so eye-opening for us, so challenging, so convicting. And Father, I pray that we as a church, as friends, as family, live in this perpetual state of repentance, of grace, and truth, God. May you be honored in it all. God, may you be honored in it all. Help us to be sensitive to your Holy Spirit. Help us, Father, to be slow to speak, slow to anger, and abounding in love, as you have shown this, and help us to be a church that practices the ministry of reconciliation. We love you, Lord, we thank you, in your name. Amen, amen! This is our last Wednesday night Bible study until August 20, China? 23rd, all right, 23rd, we're gonna go with that. No, no, that's not right, 24th is a Saturday. We'll let you guys know, just look at the calendar, okay? But we're gonna take some time off for the summer, we've got a busy week. Family camp is next week, that's where we're gonna be, it's gonna be awesome, Wednesday night, Angie and the worship team are leading worship that evening, so please come on out, worship, the kids are coming, youth are coming, it's gonna be a great time, Wednesday night, right up the road at the Potomac Christian Conference Center, love to have you guys there. This could be a wonderful, wonderful time. Bless you guys, we'll see you on Sunday! Sunday, Sunday, Sunday!